All right, it's 6 o'clock and we're called to order the meeting of the Acton School Committee, April 8th, 2014. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, if you will notice on page 2, under new business, we have 10-2 and 10-3 that talk about a change in the way that we're going to manage the warrant articles at the April 22nd meeting. And I'll, in a few minutes when we get into that discussion in more detail, I'll be sharing the information with you as well as Kim will be sharing it. But why we have 10-2 and 10-3 is that the auditors are making a recommendation that we account for the revenues. That's the simplest way to say it. So it makes everything more transparent. Fund balance is going to be used, as we've said, to help this particular budget year, but also the Medicare money, Medicaid money. So we'll talk about that in detail when we get to 10, but I wanted you to all know that that's...
Okay, so those will be adjustments, so we added 10-2 and 10-3. Any other adjustments to the agenda?
Slip them, I sort of...
Just adjustments to the...
Adjustment to the chair.
Okay, then I'll look for approval of the minutes of the meeting of March 11th, 2014.
Well, I'll make a motion to amend the minutes. It's 9.1. We just want to clarify, it says table second reading of policies until after policy? No, it was table second reading of the school volunteer policy.
Yeah, school volunteer policy.
So just, if that's there, then I will motion...
Right, school volunteer policy.
Yeah, once that's corrected, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as amended.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. I like that we accept the minutes of the March 11th meeting as amended. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Any comments from the public tonight? Very quiet public. All right, then we'll move on to our superintendent's report.
Communications correspondence, and I have one little...
Oh, did I skip that?
Here's another little cartoon from one of the magazine, education magazines. Talk about trying to put a square peg in a round hole.
That's great.
I think that's all I have. One more?
That's good.
Good. What, even though we are in this era of the Common Core curriculum and standardized tests and all this, we still have to remember that differentiated instruction is our byline and our methodology. And this poor old fellow, it's hard to put a square cube into his brown head. Because he's unique.
That's very...
And every student is unique.
That's right. That's it for correspondence?
Mm-hmm.
All right, then we'll go on to superintendent's report.
Okay, and I first want to thank the school committee for their excellent work over the last few months. I felt that we put together with their help an extremely responsible and learned budget effort. I'm saying that we have something that we think will be good for everyone. We're proud of the work that went behind it. We are certainly saddened that the state reduced our aid by 43 percent. But, and as I say here, that on 403 last week, when we went to the selectmen's meeting, they signed the warrant for our expenditure plan for $5,96,000, $253,000, or $95,820 less than what was needed in the last budget. And yes, we're asking that the selectmen transfer over from the prior undesignated fund balance, $130,000, $320,000, in order to keep the taxes at the same level as they have been. And that's an overture in that paragraph to what we're talking about in items 10-2 and 10-3, for how we're going to add those, change those two articles a little bit to have that, the numbers of monies that we're transferring noted in the plan. And I'm very pleased that Sylvia Emery and her kindergarteners, they aren't here here, but we're going to see them on the video. And we are going to be thrilled to see the things that are very positive in her classroom that are, we're guessing that we're going to be seeing that, even though we say we have a strategic plan that we're trying to put in place, where does it start? It starts with the kindergarteners. And I think we're going to see these changes that are, that make our strategic plan start off very, very positive. So we'll see that in a few minutes. And I'm going to mention that we have a new committee that, and we have our president of the unit here who's helped me put together a committee of four folks that are going to be helping, teachers that are going to be helping us, the three administrators and four teachers, working on the implementation of the strategic plan and also working on the new teacher evaluation plan. And today, there was news that both the House and Senate have passed some dictates regarding the teacher evaluation plan. And it says if you haven't started one, you need to, and we have. We haven't had the first meeting, we're doing it, haven't we?
Yes.
Okay, so I look forward to that. And as it says, Mark Noel, Rachel Driscoll, Pam Hartzell, Marilyn Young, Trish, Joy, and myself are going to be on that project. Meeting dates, the, it was hard to find a date when everyone could come, so I really shouldn't suggest not having it on the 14th, but the school committee has set 4-14 aside at 3:00 to 5:00-ish to continue the strategic plan implementation discussions and the teacher evaluation discussions. And I did casually mention in there, although I'm not using any force in this at all, I'm saying that if we aren't going to have a teacher meeting until the 15th, and I don't think they have, I don't think the teacher meeting has to be first before the continuation of the school committee meeting, because we're looking at it from a different perspective. And so, even though I said maybe we should think about delaying that, I, would you pull that sentence off there? Because it's hard enough to find time for us to get together on the 14th. Everyone's available on the 14th?
Oh, yeah.
Kevin?
I still am, yeah.
Okay.
But I, if it works better for people, I'm happy, again, things are rolling, I mean, with that committee, things are rolling. I'm ambivalent about, you know, doing it then or doing it maybe beginning of June, so that the group can share their learning.
Well, I'd like to touch on it, you know?
Beforehand?
Mm.
That sounds, I'm giving either way.
I am too. So that's why I'm saying that unless someone thinks that there's a reason to delay, that's why I sort of almost pulled it off my sheet. So, all right, we'll move forward with the 4-14 discussions with the board and several members of administration. And I think that our strategic, our educational strategist will be available for us that afternoon as well, if, if her wisdom...
Teeth pending.
Right, if her medical condition is...
She should get four of them yanked, but we should expect her there. The data speaks for itself, because we're both...
So the last, my last sentence is, please voters, come on the 22nd and on the 29th. We need your support.
Well, this monitoring reports.
Want to start with the report from Tricia, which has some of this in it?
My regular report?
Sure.
Well, Patty Demarest and I attended Maine Principals Association Conference, considered myself very fortunate that I was allowed to bring an extra person along. A lot of administrators were there solo, and I just don't think it's nearly as effective if you don't have team members onboard. When we, part of the, part of going to a conference that includes the whole state is your ability to network. And Patty and I were able to talk to other people in various administrative positions. And one thing we came away with is how important it is to have that, that level of support at the teacher leaders. And so I was able to have Patty there as we bounced off ideas from each other and talked about again where we are in this process and where we want to go. Tomorrow afternoon at the teacher meeting, I will be going over the first half of our two days, really, of summarizing it for the staff. And what we really came away with as key pieces for the process that we're in. I've made a chart for the staff. Patty came away with stuff that she could immediately do and work back with her team that will be a model for other teachers and other teams to follow. We're on the same path. It wasn't new. It was more about learning how to do what we've been doing better, getting it to the next level. So, you know, again, I cannot speak highly enough about the two days, and I wish I could have brought the whole staff. I mean, it just was so essential to where we are with professional learning communities, RTI, and meeting every child's needs. So, on to the rest.
Why don't we mention that we'll continue some of these discussions on the, at the workshop as well?
Yes.
Because it's germane, it's so fresh in our minds, particularly Tricia's, that it's going to be very good communications in that meeting on the 14th.
Yeah, I can share the PowerPoint next week as well. So, the pressing pause, we've streamlined it so that there is less of the editing work for Gail Bobea to do. Sent out some guidelines and some expectations to the teams to make it less taxing on Gail to arrange and get the pressing pause out. And it worked. Mike Tavarez, Matt Tavarez was here last Thursday morning, and if you could have seen the crowd, because they timed it for the same time as the BAM preschool group and really, really promoted it, the gym was just packed with very, very happy youngsters. It was presented from pre-K to 5th grade. He is just a fabulous writer and illustrator, and really shared with the kids, you can see the drawing on the easel up back there, shared with the kids how he uses reality. He actually had a student modeling while he sketched that right in front of them. And it was just awesome how he talked about it was okay to have extra lines, to erase less, not to stress about perfection. And I thought that was really an important skill. He did his drawing with magic marker, with a, you know, so there wasn't erasing, it was just accepting. And I thought that was a powerful message to send to young kids who are seeing themselves as young authors and young illustrators, that, you know, he himself was okay with little extra lines. And he said it kind of brought the characters to life when he worked that way. So that was really awesome. Grant application, Kim and Lisa worked together. I'm a big fan of, again, doing whatever it takes for every kid, and some kids need more time. So we're looking at the summer school program there with a Title I. Teacher meeting tomorrow, we'll have guest speakers, Kim and Ken, to help share with teachers what's going on, budget and ordering wise. I reminded both you guys and the teachers, we need to look at lockdowns, fire drills, evacuation routes, and bigger stepping up that it will include the local fire department as well. So we really hone in on some of our skills there of safety. Kristin's writing up, she says she's got her final draft in works, and she's getting feedback from assorted individuals. We're talking about, we talked today in the teacher leader meeting about, once that data is fully assembled, then what? What are the next steps? And how important that is for teachers not to just look at the data and say, yep, but okay, now what are we going to do with it? And the teachers are asking for that insight from other people. Their teachers are asking for, how can we do this better? Student attendance, something I'm always concerned about. With the updated policy, parents are getting early notification about concerns. Most parents, I got to say, are very positively responding and letting me know there was a medical situation or I'm going to try to do better. I know it's not fun, we joke just beginning a meeting, sometimes when you get a phone call from me or a letter from me, you know, parents aren't always thrilled. But the truth is, we have a lot of supportive parents who know that if I'm calling, you know, and wanting their kid in school, I'm just talking about supporting them. So I reminded the parents when I talked to them, but I'm also reminding the teachers, it's tied to the AYP. We need to have a higher rate of attendance in order to keep up the little funds that we are now getting. We can't afford to lose more. So student attendance is really important. Art auction, for those of you that could make it, you saw that it was wonderful. For those of you that donated behind the scenes on behalf of Kami and the kids who benefit, thank you very much. It was the highest earning ever. September 13th, celebrating Day of Caring. This is something I'd not heard of before. It is actually put on by a retired Maine Teachers Association. And we were selected via June Arbello, one of our very involved parents who was, she's a teacher in another district and was received the benefit. They created a hoop garden. I saw pictures of them throughout the Noble District. So you get a dozen or so retirees, you get a van load of student teachers coming from St. Joe's University College to come down and help that day. And then you gather anyone and everyone you can. So I'm asking everyone right now to save the date for September 13th. It is a grassroots response to 9/11. So it's always done as close to 9/11 as possible. So rather than focusing on the sad and the negative, these set of retired educators are trying to make a difference in their counties. So this one group is focusing on York County. We are very fortunate to have them choose us. So Andy and I have already talked briefly once about brainstorming the ideas of trimming, mulching, painting, repairing, creating, just, you can just, as Melinda's eyes are like, ooh. You know, just really imagining what we could do if we had some 25 or 35 or 50 volunteers working on this school for one day. What a difference it could make. So really excited about that opportunity. And in closing, you know, we had the Penobscot Theater. Players come and work with the 7th and 8th graders on Shakespeare. It is just truly a remarkable experience for the kids, but also for the adults who work with the kids, to watch these shy or less engaged kids, as well as those that are always outspoken, take on lines and in the course of five days, become actors. It just, it's a wonderful, you know, tribute to the group that does it, Ben and company. He always has a new partner, I swear. But he's just great, and they've been coming to our school for years, and we're really blessed. They love to come back, and the kids always enjoy.
Do you have the date for the variety show coming up too?
Variety show is this Saturday.
This Saturday? I knew it was coming up soon, but I didn't know this morning.
Yep, Saturday night, acting variety show, I believe they're expecting 18 to 20 acts, starts at 6 o'clock.
Okay, good.
They'll have also some raffles that night. People have donated items that they can raffle off to earn some extra money.
Who else has reports? Andy, you got a report for the board?
Yes. I'm just going to touch on a couple of the highlights in the report. They are repair-related. One is a heating repair, which is estimated at $3,500, which is going to have to be done as soon as we can get it scheduled. Basically, a unit that's up in the ceiling over the, close to the kitchen, the unit's leaking, and the heating coil inside the unit needs to be replaced. And the other repair, may or may not have been mentioned, but it's two sewer pumps between the 57 wing and the 78 wing. The pumps failed last month. Buddy Greenleaf was able to get one pump back up and running to keep us operational. However, both pumps are going to have to be replaced, and I'm estimating those pumps are going to be around $2,000 apiece plus installation, so around $5,000 for those. The other concern that I have is coming off of a very cold winter. We burnt a lot of oil, and a lot of my accounts are getting pretty tight. And Ken and I have talked, and Kim and I have talked on several occasions, and she's projected out some of the accounts, and we've really got to keep a close watch on the accounts because they're going to be tighter and tighter until we get to the end of June, so...
One thing that you didn't mention, and I prompted it when I talked about the variety show.
Yes.
This is exciting.
This is the first time since I've been here I'll be, actually be participating in the variety show, and that's all the information I'm going to give you.
Elvis, Elvis is in the house.
If you would like to see what it will entail, you have to come to the show Saturday.
Okay. That's worth the price of admission, right?
It'll be videotaped, but seeing it live is actually the best.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, yeah, Joy. Okay, so on the teacher, this is about professional development training, I think there are items here. On the teacher workshop day, we provide safety care training, which is the de-escalation of student misbehavior, if you will. I have been, I am now a train, I'm a trainer. I was trained to be a trainer. And we're sending two more people to the Train the Trainer Professional Development for three days, so that we'll have three people who can train our staff. A lot of training going on. We spent the day with our ed techs and two, also two from Sanford, and a Sanford teacher joined me, and we presented it jointly. And it was very, I got a lot of great feedback, it was very successful. I heard from at least two educational technicians, it was the best training they've ever had, so I was really excited about that. And I just wanted to let you know that in our weekly professional learning communities, we also have a professional learning community in special ed, our department, and we're, I'm trying to provide really solid training as opposed to, in addition to, talking about students, so that we're, we're having ongoing training in writing IEPs, aligning IEPs to the Common Core, and developing really solid documents so that the DOE is satisfied with what we're doing. We had our audit, and we have an opportunity to improve in a couple of areas, and I, I really knew that those areas were going to be, maybe in question in a couple of places. So I was very happy that I could predict that, and I'd been already training the staff since October. So we witnessed or viewed a webinar around improving our writing of documents. And these changes that the DOE expected are something they present to us now. They're, they're wanting us to do something, or they're auditing us on something that they're telling us they want us to do, it's a change that's been made recently. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So, and that's going really well. That's it, thank you.
Okay, how about Michael?
I really don't have much to discuss. Start with what broke. Google broke. Our filtering broke as a result. Our access to our online documents was offline basically for a little while, but I think everything's fixed.
Okay.
I think Google fixed the filtering thing, Google fixed their access to document thing, everything's all better there. I've been working with the technology committee and the technology plan for the 2014 to 18 school years. And I'm about 60% done. I need to reach out now, and I started to find some of the wording and some of the resources that we need in our, our actual plan for the future. I'm touching base and trying to find out what people want and what they need for technology. With that, I've been trying to find a unified or standardized assessment or enrichment tool to use. We've been using iXL, which everybody is comfortable with and used to. It has really good text-to-speech features for younger kids or children who can't read well. But then we piloted Study Island. People enjoy the reports and the data they can gather, and they liked how they can create. It just, it was a 50-50 split between the two, so I'm doing more research with the teachers to find out what solution they prefer. So we're not wasting money on a solution that's not going to be used, and a solution that will be used to its fullest. And with that, coming next year, I'm already working on designing systems and trying to migrate our current master server to the next technology that Apple is releasing. With the new technology, it allows us to purchase books, apps, and deploy them to the kids. So eBooks will be more accessible. Apps, from the App Store you see on, you know, your iPad or your computers, I can push those out, and we can buy them at half the cost that you see when you, when you look at the apps online. So I've been trying to wrap my brain around the best way to deploy next year now. I'm still working on that. And I think that's it.
Good.
Thank you. Kim?
Hello. In my report, I basically talked a lot about how we worked on the budget, and that's finalized and has been signed off by the selectmen. And having said that, tonight, when we get into the amendments we have, it's to reflect the revenue set that the, that the town will provide. So I'm kind of glad that's all done. As far as our accounting software, Financial Edge is running really well. We've got everything with AP and AR running. Your budget to actual reports actually come right out of the software, so there's no more downloading into Excel and manipulating it and printing it out that way, it's direct. And did the same thing with, like, the nutrition reports and other reports. I'm slowly eliminating all my Excels and having everything come specifically right out of the software, and, which is good. Our next thing is the implementation of payroll. A lot of the data's already in there, so it's now getting ready to do all the testing and do a couple trial runs comparing the old system with our system. And then once we know that everything's kosher, we'll just shut one off and put the other one on, which would be very nice. And so all of that's going really good. And Crystal's taken on the software really well, and it's been, it's been a nice smooth transition, actually. The other thing that we're working on, like Trish mentioned, is we did do, I worked with Lisa to come up with that summer program with her. She, she and I sat down and figured out exactly what we could do. We worked with Sylvia, and, you know, basically it'll be helping 10 kids with, you know, maybe that needs some help with learning, with reading. And we submitted it in on the 3rd, which is, it's due on the 10th, so we got it in hopefully early, and we're keeping our fingers crossed we get it. And that would actually coincide with the summer program, we'll have a special ed. And then Trish is also trying to start working on one for...
I'm such a bad.
Really? I know.
I'm sorry, I'm such a bad.
So we're trying to get one for basically all three, you know, so we can function, has a school function full-time for the summer, which would be nice. And at the same time too, as Trish had mentioned, we are working on procedures, written procedures for just about everything I can get my hands on. So as we're working on purchase orders, how to handle purchase orders with the teachers, we'll have the meeting tomorrow, they'll get their packages, they'll understand what's expected of them, and it's all written down, and, and so there'll be that nice flow, and as it goes along, we have to tweak it, whatever, but what's nice is they can be working on what they need for next year now. We can actually put it in and have it ready so that when July comes, it's just automatic, we just print it out and go. Which would save a lot of time, the old software, you couldn't, you had to wait. So that'll, that'll be good. And then we're also working on, with a procedure for the staff support, because in their contract, they can, they can choose between pay-as-you-go, 22 and 26. So that's all been written up, and that's going to be, next week, we'll, I'll sit down with them and go through all of that procedure. And the other one is, I did do a write-up for everything on how to calculate all the EPS and that type of stuff, which you have a copy, but you're going to get a modified one. But again, it's there, it's in writing, so if something happens to me tomorrow, kick off the bucket, whatever, somebody, it's all written down, somebody can follow it.
Thank you, Kim.
So that's what I've got this one.
Try not to hurt yourself.
I'll pass the thing she just mentioned out when we get to the 10-2 and 10-3.
We got something in our packet too, didn't we?
This one is, has some updates. She changed the numbers, it's the same format, but she changed the numbers to have the article 14 and 18 adjustments.
Any upcoming data? We already covered that. We already covered that.
Wasn't anything that we had thought tonight for data?
Okay, then, let's move on to Sylvia and our celebration of learning for this month.
That's the computer making changes.
Yes. I had some packets ready, too.
You are going to see a video. We are using Sound Sensible. It is actually part of the Spire program. The Sound Sensible is the kindergarten program.
The Sound Sensible program is a, it's a five-step program? Five-step program. This is a sample of the steps of the lesson. After Sound Sensible, you go on to the next step on Spire's Level 1. And this is a sample of the Spire lesson. This is the first year that we have actually gone from Sound Sensible into the Spire. Usually, when we get to the end of Sound Sensible, we just go back into our regular centers of the classroom, and I teach them. So we're actually using the Spire 2, Spire Level 1, and I'm excited about it.
You better be.
I am, I'm very excited. To see what the students are doing in the reading and the writing is just amazing. It is a 48-minute video, and I cut it down to 16 minutes, so.
Oh, gosh.
We have a dog and a cat. That's different. And then the other card, we have two dogs. Okay, and this part of the lesson is called listening. This is step one. And we are focusing attention on sounds and words and developing the student's ability to listen. Bit, bid?
Bit, bid.
Hit, hid?
Hit, hid.
Cat, cat?
Cat, cat.
Gas, cast?
Gas, cast.
Cob, gob?
Cob, gob.
Fast, fast?
Fast, fast.
Biff, biv?
Biff, biv.
Sip?
Sip.
Buzz?
Buzz.
We get our rhymes, because we know that that means we're talking about rhyming. And step two is rhyming. Remember how we show rhyming? Rhyming is bear, chair, buh, air, ch, air. And we know that when it's a rhyming word, it's the same at the end. It changes at the beginning of the sound of the word. So this was introducing to rhyming pictures. This was actually the beginning activity.
You're so smart, Kim.
You are, no. So no chair. Yeah, I'll let you do the make up a sentence to go. We have the bear and the pair. Can you put them on, on the picture and tell us a sentence to go with that?
There is a...
Let's check that. Bu, air, ch, air. And did we do pair? Air. And they're all the same here at the end. They're different at the beginning. So this part of the rhyming lesson, we have pictures. So it is the goose is on the loose. What else we have here? The goat has on a coat.
Goat, coat.
The pot is hot.
The pot.
The cub is in the tub.
We have to...
Why don't you say one and give us the rhyming ones? Those stuff's heavy today. And what are the words that rhyme there? Good job.
The cub is in the tub.
The cub is in the tub, good. And what are the words that rhyme there? Cub. Matching rhyme without pictures in? So the fat pig danced a jig. Can you say that one?
The fat pig danced a jig.
What are the words that rhyme there?
Pig, jig.
Pig, jig. And let's check. Ing, ju, ing, right. The little dog hid in the log. And can you say the sentence?
The little dog.
What are the words that rhyme there? This part is rhyme categorizing. Cat and comb. Is which one of the ones that rhyme?
Bad cat.
Bad cat, right. Yep. We have truck, wag, duck. What are the words that rhyme there?
Duck.
Duck and truck, come on, check. Du, ak, tr, ak. Are they the same at the end? Let's try wag. Tr, ak, w, ag. Are they the same at the end? No, sure not. And we know that's not a rhyming word, right? Now we have lake, clock, sock. What are the words that rhyme there?
Rock, roll.
Let's check.
Rock, roll.
Ak.
Rock, roll.
Ak. Are they the same at the end? Yes, they are. Let's try, let's try lake and clock. Cool, ache, cool, ak. Are they the same at the end? So they do not. Remember when we talked about the robot talk? Let me talk to you. I'm going to talk as a robot. I, ow, are, yu, oo. What did I say?
How are you?
How are you? Good.
How are you?
This is tag, robot talk.
Tag.
This is log.
Log.
This one is lid.
Lid.
This one is gate.
Gate.
This one is tug.
Tug.
This one is dig.
Dig.
Okay. And what you're going to do is, is robot talk, a word, and he's going to figure out which word you said.
R, rat.
Tug.
R, and.
This step, step three is segmenting. So we're going to start out with sentence segmenting. The cat ran. Say it.
The cat ran.
There you go.
Rabbit.
Put an X on cat.
Cat.
Put an X on ran.
Cat.
And you know how to write the. Go ahead and write the, where that should be.
A.
And you remembered that it's the beginning of the sentence, so you know that it has to have a capital.
Can I raise it?
And then what goes at the end? Yes, the period. The hat is red.
The hat is red.
Put an X on is. Notice the one in the blue, only has three lines.
X. The hat is red.
Do you have enough lines?
The hat is red. The hat is red.
And an X on is, so it's an X on red.
The hat is red.
X. So a little different direction, so be listening. Put a circle on hat. And put an X on the...
X.
X. Erase your board. We're going to do syllable segmenting.
Yay.
Say Batman.
Batman.
Say it again, but don't say bat.
Man.
Say Batman.
Batman.
Say it again, but don't say man.
Man.
Say football.
Football.
Say it again, but don't say foot.
Ball.
Say football.
Football.
Say it again, but don't say ball.
Ball.
Don't say ball. Say bathroom.
Bathroom.
Say it again, but don't say room.
Room.
Say bathroom.
Bathroom.
Say it again, but don't say bath.
Room.
Good job. How about summer? Say summer.
Summer.
Say it again, but don't say summer.
Ur.
Say summer.
Summer.
Say it again, but don't say ur.
Sun.
Good job. Say fishing.
Fishing.
Say it again, but don't say in.
Fish.
I need to hear you.
Fish.
Say fishing.
Fishing.
Say it again, but don't say fish.
In.
Next part of this segmenting. Now, we're going to do phoneme segmenting. Say it.
Say.
I see some people need to check pairs very keen. Go ahead. Olivia, you're first.
I'm bored.
If the sound is the same, they have to use the same color token.
Oh, okay. All right. Go ahead. At. And then we go to words.
Two. Ash.
But are they the same?
At. He was a little too small.
Uh, who's next?
E. E. At. At. At.
The four is learning about the letters and the sound. Now, we'll do our key cards. Price? F. G. G. C. Cat. K. Hit. Trilic. S. Sen. T. Tap. Z. Zip. V. Man. J. Jam. Don't say that again. J. Jam. D. Dad. And then the one that we're going to talk about today is P. Hat. Just has pot. What sound is at the beginning of pot?
Pot.
What letter says P? This one is pen. What sound is at the beginning of pen? What sound? You need to sit up, please. And this one is pen. What sound? Do you hear the beginning of pen? Do thumbs up, thumbs down? You need to fit socks with, when you're going to do thumbs up. If it doesn't, then you're going to do thumbs down. When you hear the sound of, at the beginning, thumbs down. If it doesn't, begin with a pan. On the table.
I have a big bat.
Now, we're going to do endings. Okay, so we have top, G, hat, cup, and tap. We're talking about sounds at the end of the word. What sound do you hear? Sit up, please. What sound do you hear at the end of top? At the end of top?
What sound do you hear at the end of G? G.
At the end of G.
P.
What sound, what sound do you hear at the end of G?
All of them.
What sound do you hear at the end of tap?
P.
What sound do you hear? What sound do you hear at the end of cup?
K.
At the end of cup?
K.
What sound do you hear at the end of tap? At the end of tap?
Pretty good, isn't it?
Thumbs up, thumbs down?
Again?
Thumbs up? And one, yeah.
Jig.
G.
G.
Jug.
Jug.
Jug. One, we're learning a new letters. We also, I also teach them with handwriting. We're not going to do that today. You guys are guessing the lines here. We talk about how to make the letters. And the next step is step five, dictation. This is where they have to use their sounds. And they have the same colored paper now, colored line paper. Next sound?
Pat.
Okay, next sound? Du.
Magic C.
Remembering magic C. Line first on the beak. Sound you hear at the beginning of tap?
T.
Sound you hear at the beginning of gas?
Good.
So you are, remember that's the magic C. Now, we're going to do ending sounds. The sound you hear at the end of leaf?
Leaf.
The sound that you hear at the end of past?
Past.
At the end, not the beginning.
T.
And I'm going to give you a word. Cat.
Cat.
The A is going to be the magic C when you make that word. Very nice. Thank you. It goes for... The lesson goes 45 minutes to an hour, and you can see, it is intense for them. You know, they're like, no, come on, you gotta stay with me. But they are doing really well. We finished up the Sound Sensible, and we are now using the Spire program, and they are really excited about using it. It's, you know, we're, right now, we're doing the vowel A, and they're making words, they're reading sentences, they're writing sentences.
When you say "they," you mean all kindergartners?
Yes, all kindergartens. What we do is we take the students back in the first trimester, and I, I do the assessments for all of them. And from there, we break them up into groups that are, you know, pretty close in abilities. We, this year, we have three groups. So Mrs. Croft is teaching one group, I teach one group, and Mrs. Libby teaches the other group. You can see there was another group in that classroom. Gets kind of...
Loud.
You know, when you're trying to do sounds, it gets a little bit crazy. And so all three groups now are in Spire. We're all at different places in the Spire training, teaching, but, and they, they are, they're exciting. And they're using, they're using these skills in their reading and writing, and that's the exciting part. When you start back in November, I know I always go to Lisa and say, Lisa, I don't know. She says, Sylvia, you'll be okay, they'll get there. And they do. They really... It's, you know, we're, right now, we're doing the vowel A. And they're making words, they're reading sentences. They're writing sentences.
When you say they, you mean all kindergartners?
Yes, all kindergartens. What we do is we take the students back in the first trimester. And I, I do the assessments for all of them. And from there, we break them up into groups that are, you know, pretty close in abilities. We, this year, we have three groups. So Mrs. Croft is teaching one group, I teach one group, and Mrs. Libby teaches the other group. You can see there was another group in that classroom. Gets kind of.
Loud.
You know, when you're trying to do sounds, it gets a little bit crazy. And so, all three groups now are, are in Spire. We're all at different places in the Spire training, teaching. And they, they are, they're exciting. And they're using, they're using these skills in their reading and writing. And that's the exciting part. When you start back in November, I know I always go to Lisa and say, Lisa, I don't know. She says, Sylvia, you'll be okay, they'll get there. And they do, they really, the, the, they really get the skills and they're able to apply them. Jen's been in there.
It's an honor to be in Sylvia's class. She is an amazing teacher. And I can, could you, I know you, she always like, you have to put me on the spot. But you hear Sylvia, so it's no sense me speaking for you. One of the new things that happened with professional development this year was the flexible learning opportunities for teachers. And Sylvia is one of our in-house experts. So for four or five weeks on Tuesdays?
Yes.
You offered some training?
Yeah, Mrs. Libby and I have been training the, we trained the ed techs in the Spire Sound Sensible program. So that they understand the program. You know, it's not an official training, but so that they have the total understanding. Because a couple of the ed techs have actually, last year, did some of the groups. So this gives them an understanding of why we're doing what we're doing, kind of a background on the program.
Well, I'd like to say you've been teaching for just a little bit. And so I guess I, I wonder what this is replacing, I guess.
I think that over the years, you know, I've kind of done my own curriculum, I guess. And, you know, instructed on the letters, you know, doing a letter a week. You know, tried to do the reading and the writing. This is very structured. It's, it's all laid out for you, you know, you've got the manual, it tells you exactly what you need to, to be.
But you've seen a big difference from how you taught, which was traditional, I guess you could say.
Yeah.
And, and this.
I think over the years, I searched for something.
Right.
I know that I've gone through a lot of different trainings. I know there was assured readiness for learning that I went to. I, what I see with a lot of the kids, and I think every year, it's like more and more, they come in with poor auditory skills. And so that's been my concern. It's like, what, where is that program that is going to teach these kids the auditory skills? And I really believe this is the program that works. It works for us. It develops their ability to hear the sounds, to be able to rhyme, to manipulate the words. It works. I think I was telling Jen, actually Jen was in there. When we did a writing assessment for the second trimester, I said, Jen, this is an assessment, you know, you can support the kids, but don't give them the sounds, don't help them. So I put the papers all together, took them home, and, and I looked at them like the next week. And I'm looking at them at home, and I'm thinking, well, I know I told Jen that we weren't supposed to help them. But I'm reading them, and I came back and I said, Jen, I said, you didn't, I mean, I saw her, I said, you didn't help them, right? She said, no, I didn't help them. Jen, I can't believe how well they did with their writing. I mean, it was just, there were finger spaces, there were beginning sounds, ending sounds, some vowel sounds, mainly, you know, mid-trimester, you expect maybe a vowel here or there, but not, it was a lot of them. I'm, I'm just excited. Like I say, this is the first year that we have decided to go on with the Spire, the next level. And it, Sound Sensible only introduces them to A. The Spire Level One introduces them to the rest of the vowels, the short vowels.
And this goes on to first grade, or how does that go?
On, in first grade, they're using foundations and, and other programs. This gives them a solid foundation to be able to take off with the other, you know, the grades.
Sylvia, didn't we at one point use this just for intervention?
We did.
When it first started?
Yes, when we first started, we, again, assessed the students, took, I think it was the students that, that were not coming in with rhyming. That's a good indicator if a student is going, going to be able to read or not. And so from there, we took those students, and then we had two kindergarten teachers that year. So I took the students that we felt would benefit from the program. It was an intervention program that first year. And then the other kids during our Sound Sensible time had like a, a regular literacy morning. I'm trying to think, I think there were three groups that year. And I think that year, we did three groups right in the classroom. Gets a little crazy. But now, we just, we do it with everybody.
Thank you again.
Yep.
That's great.
Thank you so much. Almost like one spot run. Remember those? Dick and Jane. I remember back when Brian was ill and I was, was here filling in for him, wanting to go around and visit some of the classes. I was excited because I was here during the school day. And I went into Sylvia's class. And she said, oh, come on in and sit down, we're doing interactive writing. And I thought, okay. And it was, it was fantastic. I mean, interactive writing at kindergarten, and they were coming up to the board and telling her what letter goes next, and putting the letters on the board. And, and it was obvious to me at that time that we've, we've come a long way, and this program sounds awesome. I read to them a story out of Frog and Toad. And it was about Toad making a list of what, when he woke up in the morning, he was going to write a list of what he was going to do during the day. And then he crossed it off. Well, that's what we did for writing. And we did an interactive writing piece today where we made a list, and then we talked about the things that we do during the day. And then it was the interactive where they all got to come up and, and do a part of it. And then we crossed off the things that we did. Well, thank you so very much. Thank you.
That was great.
It's great to see the kids.
You're still great Sylvia after all these years.
How many of you have ever felt like a little redhead? And actually, that group, I had one student that was absent. So normally, that group is six. And we have found six is really the maximum to keep everybody on target. I now am working with a group of seven in my group, and I'm like, ooh. A forty-five minute span is a lot for kindergarten age. That's, to hold their attention for forty-five minutes, that's, that's a challenge in itself. So, yeah.
I love the reaction of the one student who, who said that he was so much smarter than I was. That was awesome.
And, and like, there's different steps to like that rhyming part. And so the step that he had done, that's the very first part we do in rhyming. And we did that back in November. And we have got so far in the rhyming, that's why he made that comment, but yeah.
You notice all the little girls are sitting up straight, and the two boys are scratching their head and laying on the desk.
That was, yeah, I noticed that, yeah.
Well, thank you again. It was a great celebration.
As you and I stand.
I think there was a message in there.
I can attend to the fact that I have a kindergartner in her class, and it's amazing to see him bloom and just reading. And he was even just telling me last night, we need to make a list.
This is teenagers, oh no, moms lock the list.
Okay, we better move on with our agenda. Thank you again.
Thanks.
Committee reports, do we have anything from the long-term planning committee tonight?
Nope, the only thing that I did include in my administrative report is that I would like to meet next month.
Okay. And Policy Committee, you need to set some dates, it says here.
I ran off to California for a week, and I take some of the blame. So whenever you and I can get together, we'll do it.
And I'll try to attend if I can.
Okay. Let's go on to unfinished business. We're going to put that off, we're still waiting on, for the volunteer policy. I believe what we were waiting for was the, the reverse side of that, that had the part for them to fill out. Is that correct? Okay, so after the Policy Committee meets, then maybe next meeting, we'll have something for a second reading on that policy.
Did we have our, we might have, did we, because we had talked about, and you probably already did, Trish. A few times ago, we were talking about talking to the, the police officer?
Yep.
About, did we talk about that? Because we were going to talk about the, the practices in regards to the volunteering, did we?
Yeah, they didn't have a specific, his response was going on basically the registered, the main website, there was no additional thing that he could offer. So it wasn't like an additional service that they could offer for that. So that's what he recommended. So there is no cost, but I don't know that it covers everything we would want it to cover.
Gotcha.
Anything else under unfinished business? Or under that? Okay, then let's go on to new business. Ten-one will be taken care of in an executive session. Ten-two, we'll back to Kim and Ken.
Kim did the work on this, and I have to mention Mr. Poyant and Mr. Neal. They asked a very logical question of me. Why can't I add this up? Why doesn't it add up? And so, at the same time, we were asking, why doesn't it add up? Our auditor suggested that the way that it would add up is to put some numbers in the Article fourteen and fifteen regarding the revenues that we're targeting to help pay for this budget. So with the combination of, of Mr. Poyant, Mr. Neal, and the auditor coming to our, bringing it to our attention, we, we've done some work along with the Town Hall on this. So go ahead, Kim.
So basically, when we presented the budget, one of the things we said was, we were going to use estimated revenues for Medicaid or Main Care of fifteen thousand dollars. And we were going to transfer funds from undesigned fund balance to also offset the tax commitment. However, this formula really didn't allow you to do that. And so, when Michelle called and I said, well, I was under the impression that the selectmen would have used an article to reflect all the revenues to offset the tax commitment, but they don't really do that. And I said, show, we, I said, well, I went back to the auditors and said, how do I get the revenues in here? So that way, I can decrease the local additional funds to offset the revenues. So everything ties out right. And so, when we meet on the twenty-second, I will be asking the school committee to, and I think within your packet that he's given you is the two articles. And basically with.
It's on the back of your.
Yeah.
Turn that over. I want you to see that.
So basically, yeah, basically with Article fourteen, this is the fund, this is the article that is the additional local funds that are used above and beyond the EPS that the state says we, we have to pay. So what you're seeing is, we recommended a higher number. We're gonna, what I'd like you to do is recommend a hundred and forty-five thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars less. So the recommendation will be one million, one hundred and seventy-eight thousand, five hundred and sixty-seven, instead of the number that we had previously. This also ends up affecting the, the balance for how much we exceed on the state's essential programs and services. So that, that number also went down by a hundred and forty-five thousand, three hundred and twenty. So basically, for Article fourteen, I would like you guys to just amend it to the school committee recommends one million, one hundred and seventy-eight, five sixty-seven, instead of the number that's actually on there. Okay? And when it comes to Article eighteen, which is the revenue article, this article, previously, we just had the seventy thousand dollars for the lunch program. So it's this article that the auditor said, add in the Medicaid, Main Care, and the undesigned fund balance to the total. And then change, modify the article to read after the word fund transfers, to fund the two thousand fourteen, fifteen school operating budget, because that's where the Main Care and the undesigned fund balance comes into. And the food service budget, which is where the seventy thousand comes from. So that way, all the revenues we're going to use to offset the school budget is transparent. They see it, they know exactly where it's coming from. And, and so with this one, I would, I would need somebody to modify the article, how it's read, and then adopt the article.
Give him a couple of these?
You know, in years past, in years past, that used to be in the town report. We used to see in the town report, the amount that we moved forward. And so I don't know why that was taken out, but it used to be in there. Some of the old town reports, if you look back through them, you see that amount in there, printed in there, move forward from undesigned funds.
Well, I, I saw the summary page, okay? So like the book that I'm putting, putting together for the twenty-second, that has like the summary of all the expenditures, and then the revenues, and then the net. But the articles themselves, they don't really reflect that. We, we know what we want to do, but now it's just making the articles match. And maybe they did before, but maybe with the EPS changes and the things that you vote on every three years, and you're not supposed to change it, what the state says and that type of stuff.
So have you run all this by Jennifer and Michelle as well at Town Hall?
Yeah, Michelle, not, not Jennifer so much, but Michelle. And we also sent it back to.
Drummond and Woodson?
Well, Drummond and Woodson, another article I'm going to talk about.
Send it back to the.
Ron Smith.
Oh, to Ron Smith.
Yeah, and, and Bill Hall's the one that we usually work with, but his boss also, he's the one who actually rewrote Article eighteen. The other thing I did talk with Drummond and Woodson about is also Article fourteen. And I know that it says, and we can't change this, the very first part, it says, to see what some of the municipality will raise and appropriate. My only concern with this, and I brought it up to Drummond and Woodson, I said, you're re-appropriating another one million, one hundred and seventy-eight already. In Article fifteen, you've got the five million, the total we're asking for.
I know, I never liked that.
He's saying, when you make the motion, you motion to raise additional. Don't, don't motion to appropriate and raise, just appropriate, just, just make the motion to raise.
So leave the article the same and just, just make the language of the motion itself.
Right.
Which, the first one should be raised, the second one should be appropriate, correct? With the, no?
Don't use both words.
Well, that's what I'm saying, when one article, it's raised, and one article is appropriate?
Well, actually, the way it's written is Article thirteen says raise, which is correct. Article fourteen says appropriate and raise, which is incorrect.
So Article fourteen is going to be only appropriate?
No, only raise.
Across this all right here. So this is a change. Okay, good.
But so going back to what you're saying, and now I'm confused again, just because isn't the previous Article thirteen, hasn't it already been raised?
Okay, raise is how you're paying for it. It's Article fifteen, Article fifteen is, is the total. Okay, so Article fifteen says to see what town, the town will authorize a school to expend for the fiscal year, and everybody's saying to appropriate five million ninety-six.
So we can spend it.
Yes, but you're appropriating, this is where you're appropriating it.
Okay, so up to that point, you're just raising it.
Right.
Thank you for all that clarification.
We raise it, we then appropriate it so we can spend it.
Got to raise it first.
Can't appropriate if we haven't raised it. You can't spend it unless you have appropriated what we've raised.
Right.
That's the verbs.
It's all verbs.
Where's that meaning, go figure?
So we kept raising lots of money.
Kim was updated explanations with new numbers.
And people, I think, look at appropriate and raise as synonymous.
So this is basically an explanation of what you just told us.
Yes. Yes. And it's also a calculation, how to do the whole calculation and the whole minus.
Did we just get something?
Absolutely.
This is no good.
Well, basically, what it is, the difference is, it's now-
Oh, there we go.
-allowing you to, how to calculate in the town estimated revenues within the whole set of articles, so.
So maybe this is still a question, because we always talk about it, but I've never asked this question. And maybe I don't want to, but I will. I hear a lot of things, we're not allowed to change language, but where does the language come from?
The state legislature.
So to see what some of the municipalities, we have currently-
Okay, you know how every three years, you have that article? Do you wanna follow the standards of the essential programs, blah, blah, blah?
Yeah.
That has specific language of which you cannot change unless, on the third year, you decide that you don't want to use that type of language.
So that didn't answer my question.
The town has to vote it out.
So, so this language that's here, we're obligated to it because every three years, we decide-
Yes.
-what language we're going to use. The language of to see what some of the municipality will raise and appropriate, we created this language.
No.
No.
The state legislature.
But we can-
But we agree to it.
Vote differently. We can motion differently.
So when the time comes, we can change that language. We are not, because we're just saying now, like you just said, Drummond and Woodson said, get rid of appropriate.
In your motion.
Not in the- Just in the motion.
Not in the written article.
I can't change the written article.
So basically, the state legislature needs a grammar lesson.
Very good, yes.
Now you can go up-
And that's exactly what Drummond and Woodson said.
Read every other word.
Send Sylvie up there, you know.
That's it! They need that there! We may need some sound sensible. No, but that's helpful tonight. Yeah, it's just, yeah.
How much longer do you have to wait to take that vote?
Two more years.
To get rid of this way of doing it.
We did it last year.
I couldn't believe it was just last year.
I know.
We had two more.
Keeps getting voted in. And it's only so they can get the secret written ballot.
Yep, that's all it's for.
Right.
And unfortunately, it, the, I think the most harmful thing about the referendum is that it takes people away from the actual budget meeting where-
Yeah, the town, school town meeting.
Where the budget is actually explained.
Yep, so they just go voting it down. They don't have to go.
You know, they, they go to the polls as uninformed voters on what's actually in the budget. I think before we had that referendum, we used to get much bigger crowds at town meeting because people want to know what was going on, and they cared enough to be there to actually vote and hold up their hand.
Any questions, yeah?
Yep. Okay, is there any other new business to come before us?
I had actually three quick things. Now I lost my notes.
You got a list?
I do.
I know the list.
I do, and I will be checking them off.
So, if you could find those.
Just a shout out, maybe, um, Ms. Benad wants to say something, just the Odyssey, the mine group, the, at regionals. We, Acton was really well represented, and it was my first experience with it. And there's only a handful of schools that really seem to be well represented across the state, and Acton is one of them. And Sanford, a lot of those groups won at the state, and they were all Acton kids. So, but I don't know, you have all, I only know one of the groups, but how many groups do we have?
Uh, we have four groups.
Yeah.
We had one, the primary kiddos, they were the K to two grade, and they just went to the whole state. We went up to Auburn, and they participated there, had a little competition against, it was a friendly competition. They gave them pointers, gave them things, suggestions to work on for the next year, and they had a blast. And then we had three upper grade ones. We had a grade three, grade four class, then we had a four, five, and then we had a five, six class. Two went, well, three went to the regional area, and they did really well. And then we had the one group that went on to the state competition. And I must say, the high school teams were watching that group and asking for them for pointers. These kids are amazing. They're awesome.
And they got, what, they get third, right?
They got third.
Yeah.
That's great.
Very good.
Always well represented, Acton.
It is, yeah.
And our Acton kids that are, that are at the Sanford High School are going to Worlds.
Yeah.
True.
So that was one shout out. Just another shout out, just I was in the, the town hall the other day. I was just talking to Jen, and just to thank you, she went through that videotape a bunch of times to figure out some language.
Yeah, I know.
Just a big thank you, because I'm sure that was a challenge.
That was confusing.
And then just a, a quick one, just because some time has passed since we talked about the workshop, which is next week, right? Because it's only two hours again, and it sounds like there's a handful of things. If there are things you want to happen during those two hours, am I still the one doing the agenda?
Yes.
Not necessarily. I mean, if you don't want to.
No, no, I'm, I'm happy to. I just want to make the two hours, if I, if I'm going to, I'm happy to do that. I just want to make sure if there's other things that people want to do during that time, you let me know. Two, um, again, because you can do a million things, two hours is a very short amount of time. I just want to clarify with the board, again, because it was, it's been a couple of months since we've talked about it, what is the best use of your time that day? So what do we want to, what do we want to talk about?
What do you have down as potential agenda from our previous conversations?
I have the notes somewhere where they, if I, primarily, it, what I, what I recall is that we want to focus on the strategic plan, our role within it.
Exactly.
Is there anything specific in regards to that, just sort of clarifying and having us, I can work us through the strategic plan a little bit more, and helping us understand our role? Does that suffice?
One of the things we discussed today in our admin council meeting was having a three-ring binder for each one of you that is some of the work so far.
Yep.
So we're doing that between now and Monday.
You don't want to bind it, do you, too?
So you might put that on.
Put that, but if, that's why I said the other question is if other things have been evolving, because it sounds like some good things have been evolving since then, if, if someone else wants to do the agenda piece. Again, I'm not, I'm happy with whatever, but if-
Why don't you email us your thoughts?
No, if you could tell us what's going on in education.
And combine efforts to make it a good agenda. How's that?
Yeah.
I will email you.
Just email us.
Copy Trish Joy and myself.
Email Ken and Trish.
Because I have to go to New York.
All of us, so we know.
Help my wife celebrate her birthday.
Yeah, yeah, oh. Just because, again, I like to plan, make sure that-
You know what's going on in education. You're the one with the insights.
Oh, I know, but the-
And how we, you know-
My job is, I plan like multiple day workshops and things like that. This is two hours. It's very, very, very little, so we can only do probably like one thing.
You've gotta make it like we don't know anything.
I want to know what that one thing is, so that, get out of it, what you want. But that's good, that's helpful, so I'll put some thoughts together hopefully in the next few days.
Did Kevin spend a day in here with the teachers?
Did you do that yet?
Recently?
The one time.
He spends time, though.
Yeah. What was that about? I got some good things about it.
Yeah? Yeah, the protocol, the conversations were excellent.
Yeah, so the quick thirty-second, so when I, I invited Tricia and Kristen to a workshop I was giving in Kennybunk way back, I had the second one today, by the way, I can see you went.
Oh, cool.
It's amazing. But one of the key things we know from research is that when we make learning visible, so anything we do, like exactly what you saw with Sylvie, is the, the student learning is, you see it happening because of the multiple repetitions, and the kids actually saying, wow, look at what I've learned. Those are strategies that make students' learning visible to themselves and each other. Anything that really makes it visible tends to be, what we know from research, the most effective. So you flip that on to the, teachers are learners. I mean, I think teaching is one of the most complex things we do. So the strategies that schools can do to make teacher learning visible, those are the things that help teachers learn the most, which then translate to student learning. So PLCs, which we were talking about, is-
So to let teachers see other teaching.
Well, there's, so when teachers collaboratively design instruction and assessments, when they collaboratively look at each other's instruction as it's happening, or when you look at and analyze and talk about student work, those are all things that make our learning as teachers visible. And we used one protocol which facilitates conversations to do those sorts of things last time with a handful of teachers. And, um, one of the teachers, uh, shared a lesson, no, a text, and we collaboratively designed a lesson, again, to make it visible, and they seemed to like it. And we'll do other protocols.
And I think one of the key things we can talk about, if you want to put on the agenda for next workshop, is, you know, the conversation around RTI, and the key piece with intervention is not try to intervene an entire curriculum, but when you have those conversations about why you're teaching a lesson, or why something is happening in the classroom, what you're really measuring, you then can then analyze and say, okay, what is essential that all these students absolutely need before they move on? And there's things that are good to know, and it's great that they have that extra information, but what are the deal breakers? And by teachers talking amongst teachers about those things, Patty, and I heard this again last week with Mike Maddox up, you know, in Rockland, we've got to talk about it. And I've really, I've just learned so much about asking those questions. The protocols that Kevin has shared with us, and other avenues of looking for protocols, if we ask the right questions of each other and ourselves, that teaching piece, and that the reason we're doing that teaching becomes visible. We often then have to reflect that I was always doing it because it was just part of my repertoire, but maybe I can do something better or differently and get more bang for my teaching buck. You know, the, the goal is maximize the student learning, and, and it really is shifting, those questions are shifting the focus for teachers. It's really, really wonderful things.
Like I said, it'll also help in the end with evaluations, correct? So is that a piece that we should discuss Monday?
That's a piece we should discuss to talk about the student-
Yeah, I'm gonna update you on the-
So I think we should look at that.
It's connected.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Um, I, and that's my question, because teacher eval, that would be a separate workshop. If you want to talk about the strategic plan, that would be, that's a conversation. Teacher, teacher eval is-
That's a separate workshop. We will make another date on Monday.
And to, honestly, with teacher eval, um, two hours won't be enough.
That's a major effort.
It's a major, but what we-
We need to start, do you understand?
Oh, I told, I've been trying to start for a while! No, but I would, teacher eval, what we need to discuss as a, as a board, as committee, is, um, what's our policy in regards to, when we talk about teacher evaluation, ultimately, typically where the field is going is that we want multiple measures to look at what's considered high-quality practice. And you can, it's almost like a portfolio, an investment portfolio, where you have, you want to diversify. So you don't want to look at just one thing. And what we need to establish as a committee is what is going to be in our portfolio in the sense of the different things we will look at to, um, consider sort of the, the, the whole pie chart of evaluation. You know, what percentage is teacher practice, what's percentage is student data, what percentage is this? And we can set policy on what that is, and then the, the other, the committee, the other group can start figuring out the practices and how to go about doing that. But I, we haven't defined that piece, and there are some interesting models out there. There's a lot, and there's a lot of debate over, should we use student data? We have to talk about that. And there's different kinds of student data to use. You can use achievement data, you can use growth data, things like that.
I can see how it could go on.
That's it, see? You got me going!
Thirty seconds. Joe's security for-
Okay.
Thank you.
So what I, one more thing before we go into executive session. I gave you two pieces of paper, just FYI, okay? The one with the bus on the top, I'm having made into some posters that can go all over the place. The one that has more explanation on it, I was gonna send that one into the smart shopper. If we put it in this week, it'll be in next week, and then it would also be in on the, the actual day of the meeting. I don't know if you want to run it twice, or if you want to run it once. It's, it's up to you. It won't be in color unless we pay extra to have it in color in the smart shopper. The posters will be in color. And then I, I thought also I would have a few posters made up of the second one that's going to the smart shopper that we could put in some places so that there will be more information for people that are, are actually interested in knowing what's in the budget, what we, what we're doing with it. So do you have any suggestions or additions or deletions, or whatever you'd like to, for these?
Can these go home with the kids?
I'm going to-
The detail, can they go in the back with the more detailed?
Yeah, I'm also, I told Ken today that I'm also, um, putting together a letter that will go to the parents that will hopefully try to light a little fire to let them know how really important it is that we have parental participation at both the town meeting and also at the, at the polls.
Two questions about that one is, can we do the all call? Are we allowed to use that?
Yes, we can do that. We can do that to encourage them to come, uh, to the meeting, to, to both, and to vote, to remind them to vote. We can do the all call on that. We've done that in the past.
Great idea.
And is it also possible to have maybe some of the-
Well, Saturday night.
Maybe we've already done this, and my, my memory's getting increasingly feeble. Is, um, uh, so maybe older students here are someone to do childcare, so maybe both parents can attend.
Saturday night is what the talent show?
Saturday night.
Saturday night should be announced.
We did that before. I think, I think I did that at the last talent show. I'm almost, almost sure then that I announced it at the last one. We can have, we can definitely have the posters up by then. But I think we made a plug for the special, for the town meeting, the school town meeting, at the last talent show. I'm almost positive I did that.
That'd be great. And you can hand them as people come in, them all of them.
The important thing is if they go to the polls. That's the important thing.
Both, both of them.
Well, I know, but that's, that's the, the whole story's at town hall.
Just get them involved so they understand, that's all.
Well, I think it's, having a multifaceted approach is good, so the more thing we can do. What about, is, have we in the past have had childcare, so parents? Sometimes they just might not be able, they have multiple siblings, and the younger kid's not gonna come out to the, the, either, the first one particularly.
Depending on the age of the child, it's kind of late at night to bring a three-year-old, isn't it? You know, I mean, is that what you're thinking, babysitting? I mean, I don't know.
I would need my eight-year-old watched if I had, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I know, but I just-
Leave them at home.
No.
So maybe, uh-
You don't want to sit there through that agony of town meeting?
If we get, you know, forty instead of the thirty-five, that, that would be a, almost a ten percent, eleven percent increase.
Does the PTG dovetail some efforts with this?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk with, uh, um-
Mrs. Amer?
Who?
Amy.
Yeah, I was also gonna talk with Fran Bodkin, because didn't she work with the, what?
She's not much with the PTG, but I'm going to PTG tomorrow night, so I can certainly-
Yeah, see if-
See what-
Yeah, because we really need-
Can you copy some?
But Fran has a daughter who's old enough to babysit.
In the past, do some networking by making calls. We've, we've also asked the teachers sometimes in the past to make calls to their parents in their classrooms to encourage them to come. Unfortunately, it comes during school vacation, which, so be it. That's the way it is. Everybody doesn't go away, but some people do. So, um, that's another avenue that we've used, is having teachers actually make calls. So I'll probably, before vacations, maybe by the first of next week or sooner, send a, an email out from the board to all the staff, like we've done in the past, encouraging them to really talk to the parents about, to let them know how really important it is. Because this budget is, this budget doesn't have any place to shrink. Because it's very clean, it's very tight, it's very transparent, and there's, there's no fluff in it anywhere. So we really need to be sure that we-
I see.
Get it passed on the first time through. So everybody's all set with these? So we can make copies of these-
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah, we can make copies of these to pass, even though this is gonna be in the smart shopper, which all the older people will get. We can also pass these out at the-
Repetition, right, Kevin?
Yeah, we can pass these out at the, at the talent show.
I'd also, again, saturation, maybe this is too much, but, um, a lot of people are in and out of here all the day. Is it something, if we have Kestax up at the front office, that Ryan passes the matter, everyone who goes in there is leaving with a flyer?
Well, when these are made into posters, they'll be on the front doors, too. And then we can have, we can definitely have extras made up.
And on the website?
I'll send them to you.
What are we losing in state funding about a hundred and eleven thousand dollars?
A hundred and seventy-one thousand.
A hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars less.
A hundred and seventy-one from the draft numbers in December, not a hundred and seventy-one from last year's budget.
Well, what's the difference from last year's budgets?
About a hundred and eleven.
A hundred and eleven. That's what I thought.
Yeah.
That's what I thought. Well, I went up and talked to Ken Paul, and part of the way that's based for the town of Acton is we're considered a wealthy town, you know, that over the years, it's been this way since eighteen years I've lived in this town. And Kenny was telling me that Acton is averaging four to five million-dollar houses being built on the lakes a year. And that works against us, you know what I mean, as far as the formula? Now, this formula's been in place for eighteen years I've been here, and no one in Augusta's done anything about it. And I would think it'd be important for, maybe where these state, state races are coming up, this is something- coming up, this is something down the line, that we bring this issue up to whoever who's running the state, state rep, to actually do something about this. This has been going for eighteen years, do something about this formula that's, it's killing Acton, and it's only gonna get worse. There are people building geothermal heating systems down there, for homes they only use in the summer. Forty thousand dollar heating systems, million-dollar homes, the more they build, the bigger this number is gonna be of a loss every single year. We've got to, this town, the people, can no longer vote for state rep or state senator by, whoever does the nicest flyer, puts the most signs out, it's got to matter. They're gonna start fighting for issues like this, nothing's been done about this. This, this issue has not been addressed for our town in the eighteen years I've lived here. Whether you're Democrat, Republican, doesn't matter, but that's a hundred and eleven thousand dollars.
Once we get down to zero, that should be the end of the lunch, hopefully.
But somebody's gotta, we gotta get somebody up in Augusta who's gonna fight for...
Well, when you look at the, that formula, but then when you look at...
Fifty percent reduced lunch, free and due lunch.
That's right, so something is just not copacetic, that just doesn't make...
Exactly, that's, that's, that's your argument.
Our students are not...
But that's your argument, why isn't, why isn't somebody bringing that forward, and fighting it for our, for our town? I mean, what do you do up there? Do you, do you vote party lines and do nothing, or do you go up and you represent the people and fight for these issues that are just gonna keep killing us? That's all that's happening here in Acton.
You're right.
Okay, anything else?
I can go out of order tonight, I, I just got this notice today, and I, so it wasn't in your packet, I'll make copy so you can have. Got this letter from Sanford Institution of Savings Bank, Corporator Norman Lambert of Acton, Maine, was the winner of the two thousand and fourteen annual meeting corporate charitable donation award. Norm chose the Acton school to be the recipient of his award. So he is donating his one thousand dollar winnings to split between the backpack program and the student assistance program.
Awesome.
That's awesome.
That's amazing. So, his grandson goes to this school, so we're very pleased, and, and really, it's humbling, but it's...
And his daughter-in-law works for me.
So she does.
Crystal's...
So it's just awesome, so that was really just a wonderful, unexpected surprise.
That's great.
Helping our kids.
That's great.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
To discuss a personnel matter.
Discuss a personnel matter.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, everybody.
Good night.